That they understood already what my job was. I must ensure that all essential services are provided. And for the most part, when I explained my role at Parliament, they didn't understand, nor did they think that was necessary as far as their concern. I'm voting for you for the work as Member of Parliament in the constituency. So for many Jamaicans, we have picked up as Members of Parliament that they see our job as a councillor almost, a big, big councillor, who have the ability to do so much more at the constituency level. Many do not appreciate that there is a significant role in terms of legislative responsibility and that we should hold ourselves accountable to a particular standard of conduct. So we at the Select, Joint Select Committee level of Members of Parliament, and let me take the opportunity to list those persons on the committee since some are not here. Some would have indicated their inability to come. One person is in the hospital and others were previously organised, but it was very important for us to be here. So Cavangale, you met already, Apka Fitz Henley, Lambert Brown, Senator Lambert Brown, myself, Honourable Floyd Green is a member. Ms Crystal Lee also attended her apology, she would not be here. Julian Robinson, MP, Julian Robinson is a member. Honourable Dr Christopher Tufton, MP is a member. Donovan Williams, MP was already introduced, and Mrs Natalie Nita Garvey. For those who are in constituencies, you can reach out to Members of the Committee, yes, but reach out to your Member of Parliament as well. This is not the end of the process. Let them know what you think you want them to do, what you think their job should be about, what additional responsibilities you would like to add to this list on the job description so that as a country comprehensively, we can move Jamaica forward with Members of Parliament being held accountable for our performance. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
I wish to say thank you so much to our most honourable minister for giving us that overview of the responsibility of the Joint Select Committee and the importance of hearing from you, the public. That is really the responsibility of the Joint Select Committee. So ladies and gentlemen, as was mentioned with the green paper and ministry paper tabled, they were designed with the singular purpose to empower the people of Jamaica with a comprehensive understanding of the roles and responsibilities of our public officials. And so at this time, we're going to move to open the floor for your comments and questions, please. Don't all rush to the mic all at once. And remember I said to you before, no question at all. No question whatsoever you cannot ask at this microphone, please. But remember, I don't have the answers alone. I probably don't have half of the answers for you. But anyways, we'll direct them accordingly. Go ahead. Yes, ma'am?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Just acknowledging all the... Yeah, I'm just acknowledging our Members of Parliament of both houses that are here. In particular, I want to just say thanks to the Parliament, Ms Valerie Curtis and her team. That has really been helpful to me as the executive director of an organisation that has a great interest in the Parliament. And just as a testimony before I ask the question, when I started down this road a couple of years ago, the Parliament of Jamaica said to me, Ms Calder, any question that you have, any documentation you want from this house, you don't even need a access to information, legislation request. And she has lived up to it, so I just want to thank Mr Curtis and her team. Mrs Holness, you might as well put me on the committee. I have so much to say.
I refuse to take the mic. Ms Calder, I left out one small thing. Even though we are having these town halls, we are also going to be taking significant recommendations from organisations such as yours. So the idea is that we engage the public in every way. This is to ensure that everybody, everybody, anywhere, anyhow, who feels they have a contribution has the opportunity to have a medium to be heard. However, there are groups that are usually far more robust and involved in the recommendations. And the Joint Select Committee is expecting to field from those groups your own suggestions. So we're expecting to get some reels of paper with suggestions from you for the consideration of the Joint Select Committee as well.
Thank you very much. I thought I was gonna have to trace behind you for every town hall to get one question per meeting.
We should just stick off that one as a first point, right?
Absolutely, absolutely. And just as a general comment, I want to thank this administration in particular. I think the number of Joint Select Committees, which is the one opportunity that citizens get to influence legislation, is really outstanding, the amount of Joint Select Committees that we have had recently. But just as a general comment, yeah? Because I'm gonna go back to my seat and allow others, and if there's nobody, I'll come back. But just two comments on the overall document. When I was asked about this, I said that Jamaica has started where many countries have ended. So this is actually a really good document for citizens. But there are two things that are missing for me. One is the extent to which consultation with citizens, which is something, you know, public participation. This reads to me as something that captures more how we have governed for the last 61 years. So I would like to see rights rolled from the strategic objective, the job purpose, the key responsibility areas, the performance standards, the competences, something speaking to the entry points for citizens to be more involved than they have been. We have a lot to offer, and that's one general comment. The word represent shows up a lot, but my difficulty with representation is that my parliamentarians are supposed to be representing our views. So the opportunity to present them and to have our voices needs to be captured here.
So just for clarity, when you say access to contribute, you're suggesting what exactly? Because would this town hall for you serve as a way?
This is definitely one such, right? And if I might just tell you what's on my heart, Debbie. The budget is not legislation. I lived till just the other day. I didn't know the budget was legislation. Most citizens think it's what? It's the budget. But when you recognise that it is actually legislation, you say to yourself, I didn't even know those basics. When the time comes for us to pass a document that is saying for the next 12 months, this is what the government of Jamaica is providing for you, there is no space in that entire process for the people who are actually providing the finances for what you're gonna do for the next 12 months to help us. So I think that the voices of citizens must be involved in one of the four stages of the budgeting process. Because that budget is really supposed to be all about us and for us. So just as a practical example. And then my second area of concern, before I take my seat, I will refer the committee and those who are at home to the section that says job purpose. Now, Mrs Holness rightly says every citizen gets it. They understand the aspect of the serving them in the constituency. And she has promised us that she's gonna help them to understand the matter of passing legislation. Now, what dear to my heart is the third leg on that stool has not captured any at all. And that is the amazing responsibility that our parliamentarians have. After they pass the legislation and the laws and the set of institution, the job of the 63 parliamentarians is now to pivot, monitor and oversee government. Government is now supposed to be executing the will of the 63. So for the next 12 months, Debbie, they are supposed to be monitoring government to ensure that everything is going right as expressed in the budget and in the laws. This is one area of the Parliament that I find extraordinarily weak. Strong in some places, but weak overall. So as a principle, for the third reason that the parliamentarians exist, that has to be captured. And then once we understand that that is needed, we should see some other deliverables and activities associated with Parliament monitoring government properly. And I can say more at another time.
Gotcha. Thank you so much. Hold one second for me. Thank you.
I want to go over some of the suggestions you have. I'm gonna start with the last one because it is most foremost in my mind. So look at page 57 as it relates to key responsibility areas. Number four. Some of the things may not be spelt out, but that is exactly what it is. So all 63 Members of Parliament do hold government accountable. How do they do this? And I'm happy when you said, I didn't realise the budget was legislation. I smiled when I had the same thought. So when the budget is being done and you see government ministers and ministries, agencies and departments sitting down and doing a presentation of the budget, it is designed first based on significantly programmes from the year before, the policies in terms of where the government believes Jamaica would like to take, us to take them as Members of Parliament and ministers in particular. And then the opposition, all 63 of us, should have been sitting down with our constituents and finding out what do they want in terms of us representing them. So they now, in coming to critique the budget and spend all those hours, that was actually the process of saying, I have examined the numbers. I have represented my constituents in examining those numbers. And once at standing finance, we have signed off on the budget, the opposition has also accepted that this is the budget for all of us as government going forward for the people of Jamaica. Supplementary estimates allow now for the possibility of saying, okay, we realise we have an issue that we didn't expect, or we realise there's additional costs, or we realise we may have to shift priorities based on what is happening, as we now have with Dengue and previously with Covid. And so strategies get shifted. But committees, as noted here, is for exactly that. Holding the government accountable on behalf of the people for what we committed that we would do. And so committees like when I sit on, Public Accounts and Appropriations Committee is assessing that same budget that all of us sat down and said, yes, this is what the people want, and this is what we're gonna pass. Now, Members of Parliament have another format to reach out and communicate with constituents. That is as it relates to their constituency development fund. Before we had that fund, persons would have meetings, yes, but very informal. It wasn't a requirement. Now, you have a requirement to sit with your constituents at least once every two years, and most of us do it annually. And they now come and sit and talk to you and tell you what they believe their needs are and where they think you need to focus. A part of what keeps Members of Parliament in office is having an appreciation, spending the time, and not just do a little town hall. You have to go into the communities and find out what the people want, and you have to deliver. Otherwise, they will be removing you from your position to represent them as a constituency. So I would say at least the last one, it is here. And a lot of the committee functions that we have, even if not Joint Select, the idea behind all those committee meetings is the committees actually the workhorse of the Parliament. That's where all of the, I won't call it dirty work, the rough work should take place. And if it works, that is where you live the work. That's where you do the work at the committee level. After you have passed all these legislations and you have determined what your policies should be. What was your first point?
Consultation, public participation in the process of governance in general.
Well, I answered that in terms of the job description generally here. And you do have substantial public participation. You have particularly when you are making new laws, always inviting the participation of the public, the Parliament probably more so. And you pointed it out, you're loving the fact that we have had so many Joint Select Committee meetings. But whether we have Joint Select, yes or no, you are actually at liberty whenever a legislation is being discussed, all of Jamaica, to write and sending your contribution to be assessed. So you may not have come into the Parliament to have a discussion about it. However, all submissions, all submissions, whatever groups, individuals, you are at liberty to make your submissions. And it is required to be considered by the committee, whether Joint Select or no. And you had a second point.
You covered both, but I'm, although, you know, Mrs Holness, I would love to. I'm gonna sit, and if I get a chance to respond to you, I will do it later.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And thank you so much for taking the microphone first. And so we have somebody else at the microphone, sir. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Let me just say thanks to the committee also for doing things like this. It's very important. My good friend there touched on something I was going to touch on, but she said it even better than I could have in terms of the consultations, because town halls for MPs, I do believe, should be considered. My MP, she isn't here, Ms Crystal Lee, she does it. But I'm not sure if it's a thing where every MP, that every MP does. But it's really good when she does it. And as I said, things like this is really important for engagement. And it's really good to get the opportunity to come and speak. But I have an initial question about the evolution of our governance structure. Please bear with me. I am young, so I don't understand a lot personally.
You are necessary to this process.
I understand as Members of Parliament, your role is to legislate as lawmakers. But over time, that has kind of changed. And your roles would have overlapped that of councillors. Because I do believe that initially, it was intended that councillors would be the first point of contact. But persons kind of overstep councillors now, and they look to MP for things. So in creating this, the job description, how will we make that distinction? And will we even, what will we stick with? The old way or the new way of what the people now demand?
Thank you so much for your question.
After this, I'm asking Donovan to take the mic. So town halls are good. It allows persons to be able to come and have an input. But it's costly. Members of Parliament have a budget. And I looked back at mine. In 2016, when I became a MP, the CDF allocation was 15 million. I remember in 2007, it was 40 million. So the idea is that ministries, agencies and departments should really be the key arm that executes as it relates to projects for all our constituents. The CDF, the benefit, and I chair the CDF committee. And one of the rules we implemented was you will not have your CDF projects approved if you do not have any consultation. That's how important public feedback is. So Members of Parliament can no longer sit down and decide, I know what my constituents want. I am gonna just put together my CDF project and, you know, forget about...
South Florida Symphony Orchestra's 26th season is your passport to a musical adventure that transcends time and fills the soul. Joining with us as we visit iconic works with Bernstein, Stravinsky, Tchaikovsky and more, including 200 years of Beethoven's magnificent Ninth Symphony and orchestra premieres by trailblazing composers. Where will the music take you?
Over time. Because in order for you to continue to work and to legislate, you have to be there as a Member of Parliament. And as human beings over time, what have we started to do? We have started to work in keeping with what people expected of us, because that's what they vote for. Now councillors are in fact supposed to be doing a lot of the legwork. It has fallen on a lot of Members of Parliament to do so at the constituency level. That is something we have to fix. So we have looked at job descriptions for MPs, but I'm sure in future town halls, we'll be looking at job descriptions for councillors. And if you look on the municipal corporation website, you will actually see what is the role and responsibility of councillors. So those in the public, take a look. It is there. I thought back to why the role of Members of Parliament have slowly changed over time. And my humble opinion was, when we started out in 1962 and continuing and continuing and continuing, guess what would have happened? We have substantial legislations. We would have over time continued to refine the laws. So Members of Parliament are not legislating and writing new laws in the volume that they used to. It is a process of looking at where are the gaps? What are the changes that need to be made now? And those changes are continuously made. And that takes the feedback of the public. So one of the recent legislation would have been, Minister Grange, in her capacity as gender minister, looking at the sexual harassment bill, if you remember. Members of the public were excited to contribute, excited to understand. And all of those feedback make their way into any new legislation, amendment to legislation. Members of the public should appreciate as well that we are not perfect. We're not gonna get everything right every time immediately. Laws are dynamic. And as soon as you have legislations in place with greater participation of the public, you, if you find that you have gaps, should move very quickly to amending and fixing those legislations going forward. My experience in my limited time in Parliament is that, guess what? Legislations take too long to enact. So you talk, you talk, you talk, you discuss, you discuss. And sometimes by the time you're ready for that legislation, it is far outdated already. We have a duty to start looking at the laws that are requiring adjustments. And the people of Jamaica, like Ms Calder here, have a duty to keep looking also at the legislations to say, okay, we have some suggestions. We believe that this legislation is archaic. And we are writing to the minister in question. And we are here, even in the civil society, to be a part of committees, to be a part of groups that can help with just feeling what our ideas are and hearing what the rest of the public think about those ideas we have generated. So it moves all of us together as Jamaicans in the direction, a positive direction, we wish to go. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I have another one.
You have another question? Okay, go ahead. We will turn that question over to Mr Gayle.
Thank you for that.
Senator Gayle, yes. Go ahead, sir.
So I don't know if an MP answered. I'd rather if a Member of Parliament would answer.
Oh, absolutely, sure.
We have three MPs here.
Yes.
No, they are MPs. I'm not, so they understand it better than I do.
By the way, I don't mean to pause you, but I was a little bit reluctant to ask persons to identify themselves at the microphone. I was given the permission to do so. I hope you don't mind, but could you just state your name, please? If that's okay with you?
I'm Dante Minto. I'm a second year student at the university.
Thank you so much, sir. Please go ahead.
So I understand it to be to legislate, you need to have data. You need to know what your constituents need. So can any of the MPs here tell me, are your offices equipped to keep up to date with your constituency data? Because, you know, things change. Like, for example, the employment rate and all of that. Is your office equipped to keep up to date with that type of information?
So you're asking about a data collection system that the MP's office will have?
Is there one?
Is there one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or is it effective or, you know, something like that?
That is a fairly challenging question. All Members of Parliament are actually given a budget to run your constituency office as well. The Member of Parliament's constituency office is not a GLP office or a PMP office. It is supposed to be an office for all constituents. Many persons operate using a database, but many do not. Some persons do not attend their constituency office. Sessions like this and the participation of Members of the public will help to inform Members of Parliament. If you are not accessible, if you don't run an office, if we come to you and you can't help us any at all, then you really don't need to be there. And I make no apologies. So I run a constituency office that I call a mini-government. Meaning there's somebody who handles education, board selection, vouchers, education fees, if persons need help with homework, everything. And there's somebody else responsible for welfare and sports. So literally every ministry in government, I have a mirror at my constituency office. It operates every day, Monday to Friday. And we have one day when everybody come in with their requests, leave them. And we try not, because it's rural, to have your coming back, coming back. Almost everything you need done after you have filled out the needs assessment form required by the government, then we deal with it by calling you, doing all the follow-ups so you don't have to come back to the office. It is something that we hope every single Member of Parliament will do. And I'm encouraging Members of the public to visit your Member of Parliament office. If they have none, please make it known.
All right, Mr Donovan Williams?
Yes. On the question of data collection. Well, I'm a relatively new Member of Parliament. So I'm in that process of data gathering. But I will tell you that there are other agencies that we rely on and we collaborate with from time to time to gather data, especially on the constituency, the socio-economic status, the different socio-economic standards. So for example, the Social Development Commission, they would have, over the years, they would have had the luxury of a well-equipped data gathering research staff. And so it is a fertile ground, in my estimation, for data collecting and to understand your constituency and the demographics. But what I've also been doing, at my constituency, is to create my database. And I know my constituency exec secretary is here today, one of my assistants, who specifically handles that aspect of data collection. So we create, and as MP, sorry, I would say Minister Holness, in her own right, but as MP Holis says, that, you know, we are here to serve the entire constituency. So we are supposed to be gathering data on the entire constituency and to understand the demographics. So for example, you want to know the unemployment rate in your constituency. You want to know, how are we doing? Are we seeing more of our young people now in employment? Are our young people now doing training? To what extent are we having more people attending hard? Especially since we have removed the fees. And, you know, more people are accessing it now. So that's the kind of data I'm trying to track. We have the police. So what I do as well, from time to time, I will write the soup to ascertain the crime statistics in the constituency and the trouble spots and where we're getting the problems. Because that would help us to intervene based on the trouble spots. And, you know, so we look at that. So as a young MP fledgling, building my database, I am relying on institutions, plus I'm trying to gather my own data to serve the constituents as best as possible. Thank you very much.
Okay. So MP Miller called me a while ago. He said, Mrs Holness, your operation is very different from what many of us can afford. Because what we get the funding for is a constituency office and one assistant, which is true. So one assistant, which first term Member of Parliament here says he has one single assistant. It is useful to get information from SDC, yes, Social Development Commission. There is also the possibility of both residents, Members of Parliament, getting information from statin. And you can use that. I do the same. I have no crime in my constituency, and I want to keep it that way. So from time to time, the statistics from the police is zero or one. And I wish one would be zero, so I am grateful for that. Now, the challenge is, it is almost impossible because of lack of data to function as efficiently as we would like to. So my last back to school, I sent down to SDC. And I said, can you give me the number of children in my constituency? I got some information. It still was not sufficient. But at least it helped me to be able to say, guess what? I'm gonna need 4,000 school bags. That helped, and it gave me an idea as to which communities they had done an assessment on. So other Members of Parliament, that information is available. Very often, it is not actually at the constituency level. The SDC's information is at the community level. But you can use that information at the community level to assist you significantly. And I made a commitment to them. The communities you haven't covered, I will do the assessment and share the information with you. So that government is incurring the cost of doing an exercise once. And we're efficient in sharing the information and data that we have gathered with each other.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for that response. We're going to hand the microphone now to Mr... We're going to hand the microphone now to Mr. Miller, MP St. Catherine. Sorry, I don't believe your microphone is on, you can use this one.
Thank you very much. Actually, MPs just stated what I wanted to say. SDC is a good source for me to get information. Because as MP Holness stated earlier, that the budget that we get to really run the constituency office is not enough to do research. So especially for me personally, I go to all the citizen association meetings and I will get information there. Whenever I have my back-to-school treat or my health fare, I get information there. I'll just go on the corner, find out who is going to school and find out who wants to go to school, have little spot meetings and get information like that. Because the information gathering is a lot of work. And it takes a lot of scrutinizing and unwinding the information and the data. And also some of these persons that you'll meet and you'll bring heart to them. You'll put certain strategies in place, get certain sponsors to give them a stipend, a food to go and study, and they just don't turn up, right? So basically, for me personally, I'm in my constituency every day. But I'm open to the public on Thursdays. Because if you open the office to the public every day, then nothing is being done. And then once it touch 5:15, 5:30, I'm out in the community, walking a community, which is, I, I, I'll get information in that exercise as well.
Thank you so much, MP, for chiming in. You have any other questions you'd like to ask?
One more for Sir Miller. One for you.
Come back, sir.
I, I choose you because I consider you to, I consider you to be one of the more modern MPs.
And that's a compliment.
It has been challenging. It has been challenging.
This shirt, this shirt, this shirt.
Blame my wife for the shirt.
Right. But it has been challenging for us over the years to, to develop job descriptions. Because it is hard, it can't be captured. Help us to understand what can be captured. Tell, tell us something that you have, you, you have, like something that's an odd thing that people probably wouldn't expect you to be do- doing as an MP.
Okay, got you.
So, so we can understand the, the, the challenges of doing this.
I think MP Holness stated it earlier, but the constituents believe that you should do everything for them, right? And that's the reality. So before I came to this meeting, I went to a church service this morning at seven o'clock. I'll meet some of my constituents there. I went to a service at 10 o'clock and I'll meet some there and then I got a WhatsApp. One of my constituents is saying that, you know, she's overweight and she needs some wall robe and she needs some money from me to get her wall robe. And I'm saying, I genuinely am not in that position right now. And then she said that she's very disappointed that I cannot assist her, right? And I should readily, she's in need and I should readily give it to her. And I said, but I've assisted you over and over already, right? And the one time that I genuinely cannot, it is, it is a big deal. And that's how it is, right? I'd receive calls because my number is public. I'll receive calls like three o'clock in the mornings, two o'clock in the mornings. Persons calling me to purchase some pills that they are selling at the pharmacy for them after they have done an act and they are satisfied for the act and do all manner of stuff that people believe that you should do. So like a Member of Parliament, job is from the womb to the tomb, right? And everything you can think of, they want you to finance it for them. And the, the, the CDF is set up in such a way that majority of the times, on Thursdays, when I'm in the constituency office, seeing constituents, you'll find an elderly person come in front of you with a, a prescription to buy a medication. And the procedure is they'll fill out a form in my office, checks and balance, they'll bring the prescription, I'll get an invoice from a pharmacy close by. I'd have to send that requisition to SDC. SDC will do their research if the person really need the prescription. And then SDC will take some time again to prepare the check. Sometimes that take two to three weeks, right? Three weeks max. By then, in my view, that person perish, right? So sometimes you have to really go in your pockets to really assist constituents, which is not healthy as a Member of Parliament. And I see can draw you for that as well. Because it is the reality that is out there. And it is very heartbreaking at times when you're really not in a position to assist and persons really don't know the role of a Member of Parliament. And as a new Member of Parliament, I try to read a lot. I try to be there for my constituents. And just week before last, I had my CDF meeting and not many persons from the constituency came. So I promoted it with all the citizen associations because I work through citizen associations. I, SDC assisted me in promoting it. I sent around a town crier and very few people came. It's on my social media page, very few people came. So maybe you can assist us as a modern individual to get the citizens coming out.
Sometimes when you hear Members of Parliament speak, you get the sense that everybody in the constituency operate at one particular level. It is not the case. Every constituency is actually different. And depending on the demographic of your constituency, that's actually what determines what their needs are. So you have Members of Parliament whose constituency incorporate people who are middle-income class, upper class, already have a lot of infrastructure in terms of community center, health center or hospital, school. They have different needs. When they come to you, either they're Citizens Association, they're not asking you for $10,000, $5,000, wanting you to buy a voucher or whatever else another constituency may need. They operate at a different level. And they will say, look, we are looking at the streetlights along the boulevard and we realize they're out, that's what our interest is. Their interest is all the way. Ways the road, even the roads in all different types of demographic and need of people across Jamaica. And so you can understand, each Member of Parliament now is required to sort of have a deeper sense and appreciation for your own seat. Have an idea as to how your seat is set up, what your needs are, so that you will see yourself be returned as a Member of Parliament in the future. Janet will say to you, the job descriptions for many persons who operate at the level of civil society groups is actually thought about at a different intellectual level than the persons in your constituency see your job description. So I promise you, not one person in my constituency is interested in this. Unless it is someone who has been educated, they're in industry and they say to themselves, if I was operating as a financial controller, economist, I was working at Statine, there are some requirements in terms of how I should function. And they see that, they think at that level. But the man I spent three hours last Thursday at my constituency office speaking to, said to me, I vote for you in 2016 and I'm gonna get nothing. I'm gonna get no benefit when I vote for you for. I said, you didn't get any roads fixed in your area, water, light. He said, I'm not business with any of that. Me personally not get no benefit. You give me two food package, what at? That was it and that was his understanding. He said, I've been trying to get help from you since 2017 and I have not gotten any response. I said, but that's strange because I have a database in my office. Every single person who come, their need is recorded. I have to, because of limited funds, go through and say, okay, you asked for housing assistance. So you cannot therefore get chicken. Choose if you want chicken or if you want help with the housing. So I have a system in my seat. Everybody have their own system. You only get one benefit. You choose what that benefit is going to be. Because if 10,000 people vote for me and 9,000 people voted for the PMP, that's 19,000 people. $20 million, even if you try to divide it and give everybody a little bit, it is nothing. So the job of the Member of Parliament cannot be seen as one where we just give out benefits. And some seats have a far, a vast number of people who that is their, their aim, benefits. While you have other seats with communities that say we need a community center, we need a cultural development program for our young people. We need you to do more job fair so that our young people can get an appreciation for what different jobs are like. So they can determine what they would like to be when they grow up. And so job descriptions are far and wide and varied. Including, like I've said to you, I have actually done family counselling work. So you have constituents who come and say, look here, if you talk to my girlfriend, she'll take me back. And it is expected that I should be able to figure out the problem at home, talk to the girlfriend and take, and have her take him back. As a Member of Parliament, I sat down and I said, you know what? I don't know the situation. If this man is abusing, I can't go interfere and have her take him back. And before you know it, hit her down and kill her. As the Member of Parliament, I'm responsible. But we go through a lot and that is it. Members of Parliament have a hard job because you do not work five days a week from nine to five. And persons have such great expectations of what you should be, who you should be and how much you can do. And mentally, it really requires that you put on a different thinking cap when you go out, when you communicate, when you write on your social media pages. Because at all times, you have to remember, don't get upset. Don't get upset. As far as they're concerned, they don't understand anything else more than this is your job. You have to find a way to get it done.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, MP Holness. Before MP Miller chimes in, we thank you so much for your question. We just want to acknowledge the 155 persons who have joined us online. Thank you so much for joining us this afternoon. And I believe if you are a subscriber to the PBCJ account on YouTube, you are able to leave your comments and questions. And we will try our very best to, to answer those as well. So Minister, MP, MP Miller, please go ahead.
And just to add what, to what MP Holness stated earlier. So my secretary was been with me from a one-day election in 2020. And she's going to a new job next week. Because she's, the stress that comes with the job, that constituents come to the office to articulate to her, she has an instant headache every night when she goes home. You know, truth to be told, it's very stressful. And people are really experiencing great need there. What I would like to, I didn't remember to say earlier and because of the question that you asked. And MP Holness stated earlier that the budget that we get to run our offices inadequate, right? We would want a conversation in Jamaica to move in the direction where we have a set building for the Member of Parliament. Because majority of that money is used to pay rent, right? So if the government owns a building, whether PMP, JLP, any Member of Parliament, there's a place for them. So especially my constituency office, I rent it, right? And it's not painted in any green. Because over the years, constituency offices are painted in a color that represent the MP political party. And it isolates some people from going there. So I put my office in neutral colors, it's for everyone. But if we can have a office to say, listen, this is the office of the Member of Parliament, whether PMP or NEP or JLP, this is the office. And you know that this is the office and it will assist greatly with assistance of, as well, research assistance, et cetera, which will be very important.
Thank you so much, MP Miller, for that. And I believe that we are in fact collecting the notes from today's proceedings. So we thank you so much for that recommendation. There is somebody else at the microphone, please. I saw him go there first. So I'm gonna ask, yeah, I'm gonna have him ask his question and then we will come to you thereafter. Please state your name, sir, and go ahead with your question.
Good afternoon. My name is Junior White, I'm from Central Kingston. And you know, as the gentleman said that Mr. Miller is a modern MP, I should take my MPs as a modern MP as well. I'm gonna state that for the record. One other question I want to ask is, when a particular MP, either from both sides, behaves a certain way in Parliament, who holds them accountable? That's question number one. And I'd like to make a comment. Sessions like these are very crucial, especially for young people like me who have the ambition to be a Member of Parliament one day. So we can sit in and know what are the real functions and what the Members of Parliament really go through on a day-to-day basis. And so far, I've liked, oh, Mrs. MP Holness has outlined certain things and I am sitting and I'm learning. So whenever I get into that position, I'll know what to do going forward. But I, my other question is, going forward with the new Parliament, which will be across the part there, can, is it, is it where the Prime Minister can take suggestions from the public for some of these committees and stuff in Parliament to have like outside persons, like church bodies or community leaders, outside persons to be a part of the community, a part of the committees?
All right, thank you for your question. So, so you're asking firstly about who holds a Member of Parliament who behaves in a particular manner in Parliament? And then the second accountable. The second question is that you're asking if there are, could be suggestions to have other representatives, the community level, church level, et cetera, to be a part of, of the, of the joint or any other committees? Got you. All right, Mrs. Mrs. Yes. MP Holness, you want to say that one too?
I'm sure you're not gonna. Like this answer at all. So in a very frank way, it is very important to have the public input because you represent the public. However, we have to also be very careful about how far we go in having persons take responsibility to run the operations of government. Because only some people are going to be held responsible for the final decisions. So you cannot elect representatives and decide that you would like to lead them. You would like to do the work that you have elected them to do. If you are not comfortable in their ability to lead and to carry out and execute and represent you, then you need to remove them. So that is maybe something you're not happy to hear, but it is an important thin line where the job of the judiciary is separated, the executive is separated, the legislative is separated. And it is very important to incorporate, have an appreciation, hear the suggestions. However, the persons held accountable at the end of the day will be those, particularly as it relates to us in the Parliament, those in the legislative or the executive of the Parliament. So please appreciate that one. And Mrs. Janet make up her face, but it's all right. I'm gonna have Cavan Gale, Senator Cavan Gale also respond.
I think you, you, you ask a very important question in terms of the conduct of parliamentarians. And you know, within a workplace, you have rules. And if there's a breach of any rule within the workplace, the employer takes up that breach. This is an exercise that is reviewing the conduct of parliamentarians. And you have a set of rules within the standing order that speaks to any breach going before the Privilege Committee. And you have some detailed breaches that goes before the Ethics Committee. Now, what it is telling us is that in doing the revision, we might have to expand those rules and define them a little more so that Members of Parliament in both houses, because I take note of the fact that we have been speaking about the House of Representatives. But parliamentarians, they're, they have, they have to know their scope of permissiveness within Parliament. They also have to know the rules. And we always encourage parliamentarians to review the standing orders. And standing orders are being reviewed consistently right throughout the years of Parliament, the parliamentary year. But this gives us an opportunity now to again examine those rules. As you know, let's say, behavior evolves. And the expectation of behavior also evolves. So this is an opportunity, ladies and gentlemen, to treat. So this is an opportunity, ladies and gentlemen, to treat with those rules and to examine new rules befitting of the expected and anticipated behaviour of all parliamentarians.
Thank you so much, Anissa.
I just wanted to touch on the aspect of your question relating to civil society being, forming a part of, or the public forming a part of the select committees. Well, you know, I've been, I've been sitting on, well, I've been a member of several joint select committees in the past, and we have reviewed, and you know, some, you know, I would say, new laws, you know, with real implications. And I must say, I admire the manner in which we have conducted those reviews in terms of the legislation that we have introduced. One of the important aspects of it that stands out to me is the fact that members of various civil society groups, I can recall, we were looking at the firearms prohibition, the new firearms act, prohibition, offensive weapon. We had individual persons, individuals submitting their, as we would say in Jamaican parlance, their two cents. They all got an opportunity. And it took up a lot of the committee's time hearing from civil society, the various different organisations, they submit, some of them submit their written reports, and some appear in person before the committee. And so, to answer your question, I think that that is one of the ways in which we involve the public to participate, not necessarily on the committee itself. But my view is that by making representation and by making their points or position heard, they're actually a part of the committee in the long run. Thank you very much.
Just to make it very clear, the joint select committees spoken about, they are literally designed for that purpose. When major legislations are either being, well, all legislations are being implemented new, one, and any major change to any legislation, those committees are established. You will have a list prepared by the Clerk of Parliament of all the different civil society groups that they believe would be interested in that particular area of legislation. And it would include particularly those that are immediately responsible for considering in their particular association that element. And then they go wider and wider and wider. So if you are doing something to do with employment, they are gonna say, we need to make sure the Manufacturers' Association is there, PSOJ is there, we will include Statin to make sure that they're there, and the trade unions are there, literally going through and saying, okay, we want to make sure that we have a true representation of all the key stakeholder groups, so that we can hear their feedback. What usually happens is a request for a written submission. Why? So that they have time to deliberate and to critique their suggestions and to poke holes into what they're suggesting. So that by the time it comes to be considered by the Joint Select Committee, it is something that has really taken into consideration that area of legislation to improve the quality of what we come back to the public with as the final bill. So that process incorporates civil society. And not only groups, if an individual decides that I have a contribution to make, they are allowed to make their own submission as an individual, one man. And every single time, the public is invited to participate. So the process is just like has happened with the town hall. Individuals, particularly groups that we know are interested in the Job Description Code of Conduct for Parliamentarians are specifically invited and will be invited further for additional discussions with the Joint Select Committee. However, town halls and participation in a very public way is to ensure that the entire Jamaica can participate, can be involved, can say, okay, you know what? I have a contribution, I see something that is deficient, and I have a suggestion that I would like to make.
All right, thank you so much, MP.
As we part on that, I've actually seen.
We have some other questions.
Okay, just one thing. I've actually experienced suggestions from the public influencing provisions, causing the committee to rethink its position in terms of a particular, its position on a particular provision in law. I've actually seen it.
All right, thank you so much, MP Miller. You do have a follow-up question.
There's a quick follow-up question. Does the standing order, the document for the standing order, is it a part of the access information where John Public can get access to it, so we can know what are?
So the standing order is on the Parliament's website. There are two copies of it. It was recently updated and circulated in parliament last Tuesday. Because as I said, it is a dynamic document. If we notice that there are areas for improvement, a section that has not been considered, it is updated accordingly. So this document, this is the one for the House of Representatives, there is one for the Senate, and both sit on the website for anyone to be able to download and to take a look at. You spoke about conduct, and I am going to use the opportunity to at least speak to one very current thing. I noticed people complaining about the mic system in parliament, that's one. Conduct was very bad, cussing and carrying on. I recall the clerk sending out a message that we are invited to come to parliament for a training session at 12 o'clock because parliament starts at 2. Very few of us attended that training session. We were taken through the process of how to use the new mic system. The new mic system operates in keeping with this, exactly the standing orders. However, when persons over time start to drift in their behaviour and pattern from what is supposed to happen, if you are not careful, they start to think, like many of our constituents, that that is exactly what is supposed to be. So the standing order specifically says that you are not to speak unless the speaker acknowledges you and tells you you can speak. No mic system changes that. That is the rule. Now, our practice in parliament, because the mic system used to malfunction, is three people would be talking at the same time. That's what happened. You would have somebody who is speaking, that person is doing their presentation, and the rule is that they should speak in silence, everybody should be quiet and listening, uninterrupted, says the standing order. But guess what? Two, three people feel like they have something to say, they just flip on their mic and talk. So you would have very often answered that records the minutes, which are critical minutes of the proceedings of parliament, they confuse, they can't hear properly, they don't know exactly what was said sometimes. And when called on now to say X or Y happened in parliament, pull up the records. They are nervous sometimes and saying, Lord, I miss that, because some persons are unruly. So the mic system in parliament, and I'm going to do some reviews to see how it compares to mic systems for parliaments across the world, operates like I notice it operated in the conference centre. Conference centre, right down there at downtown, the first person to press the mic is the first person up to speak. That was our training. The next person to press, whoever it is, will be the second person. The speaker cannot jump over number one to number three. However, if according to the rules of parliament, the speaker is at liberty to say, no, you either cannot speak now and must follow these standing orders, or you are not supposed to speak first because you are third in line, you cannot do so. So mic system has not made any change to your behaviour. This is the book that guides the structure, the principle, the operations of the House of Parliament.
MP Holness, just before you have a seat there, we're taking a question from online about the same standing order documents you have in hand. Full disclosure is asking, and thank you for your question, where can I make recommendation to parliament to update the standing order?
You can email the parliament at any time. And you can also send a note to the Standing Orders Committee. Your member told you that the committees are the workforce of parliament. Every single thing that the parliament does actually have a committee that meets and deliberates over that particular area. So even to improve and upgrade the standing orders, there is a Standing Orders Committee that everybody sits down and say, okay, like I am gonna look at one particular thing. I'm currently Deputy Speaker. I noticed that we had an uproar the last time. There is no section in the standing order that actually speaks to tabling of bills externally. I noticed it, and I'm gonna sit down with the clerk, because the standing order speaks to tabling of bills from committees. It speaks to petitions and bills, but it does not necessarily speak to tabling of a bill, yes? So I won't say call it a bill, I will say call it a report, because that was the issue, it's not a bill. Tabling of a particular report that came in, it was silent on that particular issue. So you notice persons in the opposition jump up and say, I want to talk, I want to ask a question. And the speaker said, no. Speaker was within her right. A speaker, why? Because the standing order is silent. So every time you see a gap in the standing order, it allows us now to go back and look and say, are you sure there is a gap? Is it covered under this section? No, it's not covered. It now becomes another item that can be referred to the Standing Orders Committee to improve this particular book that governs the operation of the parliament.
Thank you so much, MP Holness. And for the persons who are just joining us, thank you for being here this afternoon. For those joining us online as well, let me just remind you of why we're here. This is the first town hall meeting, the first in a series by the Joint Select Committee of Parliament. We're looking at, considering job descriptions, codes of conduct, and performance standards for parliamentarians. We are opening the floor for questions on your recommendations of how you would like your Member of Parliament, your ministers to show up on your behalf. What are you looking for from them? So please, no question at all is too big, too small to ask, so we're asking you to do so. We have one hour left, we should be wrapping up at 6 o'clock. So we're asking all of you, all of us here, to make the very best use of the last hour. You had a question, please, thank you for your patience. Go ahead to the microphone. We're asking as well on behalf of our interpreter Tony, that you just elevate for us a little bit more because we're catering to a diverse audience here. Thank you so much.
Sure, thank you. Just want to say greetings to the ministers and leaders, and also to the moderator. My name is Ruth Smart. I am not familiar with my division, but I will say that I'm a Jamaican, because I would love to be able to go to every division and be free to be a Jamaican. But my question really is for the Member of Parliament, is that whenever it is that you would start on a project or venture on it, and it's been five years or six years and you have not been able to complete it, is it possible that there's a way that we could see a percentage or agree to say that we're now at 50%? These would be the issues as to why we have not been able to complete it. And we believe that with more resources, we will be able to do so. This is so that persons from myself who work or would be at colleges and might not have the time to go with the hustle and the bustle of a constituency, or might have interest in it, but it would be at our forefront to know that this is what is going on, other than to make some assumptions that nothing is going on and our MP is not doing anything.
Thank you for your question. MP Holness, would you like to take it, or we're gonna ask MP Miller to? He should probably hold on to the microphone.
I don't want to. I am not that experienced a Member of Parliament, you know, please understand that. I do not think myself that experienced at all, and it is the truth. So I am trying my very best here, as best as I can. There are two aspects of projects in government. So one, in terms of the national budget, you would more likely get an update as to what has caused either the delay, overrun, and sometimes even the extent of time it would have taken for that project. Several reasons. One is sometimes the ability based on the procurement rules, what we call red tape, blue tape, to be able to move some projects along as fast as you would like. One of the other constraints sometime is the budget. So if you have planned a particular project and you have some other mishap, like happened to us in Covid, a lot of the resources to execute projects were pulled from the various ministries, agencies, departments, literally sat down and said, okay, culture, let us see what we can take out of your budget, education, we have to pull out of your budget, national security, we're pulling out of your budget. And by the time you looked, the ministers were bawling because their budget was slashed significantly to deal with what was now critical for Jamaicans, the Covid virus situation. At the constituency level, however, that communication needs to be improved. Not all MPs operate on social media, the modern MP, and not all constituencies, not all constituencies have constituents who actually track what is going on in terms of projects. I said to some members of my own party recently, I shouldn't give you this strategic, this statement, you know, but I made a suggestion on how they could be more efficient with their road projects. It is something I tried because I figured it out after a while. When I got my first road project, they said to me, oh, Mrs Holness, please let us know which road you want for the G project. And I said, beautiful, Dallas Castle Road, it is in a terrible condition, it's in the Quintier Division, could I get that road? And they said, yes. And I went to Dallas, and I said, Dallas Castle, Dallas Castle Road is up and coming, it's ready to go, you are getting the road, and everybody was so excited. When the money was allocated, they then said to me, go and look on Dallas Castle Road and determine which part of the road you're gonna fix. I nearly died. I'm like, what part of the road? I don't understand. They said the budget is 10 million, the cost of the road is 32, so you figure out which one third is gonna fix? You know, I literally could not recover because I have been an MP, been an MP of my word, and I had announced it. So you know, I ended up struggling one third, then we come back, the next time I got allocation, I go back because I had committed to finishing that road. So what that did for me as a Member of Parliament afterwards, I sat down and I said, look, Garden Town Division, when we meet, sit down and tell me, what are your 10 worst roads? Then I did the same for each division, your 10 worst roads, your 10 worst roads. And then I sent them to the NWA and said, I want you to cost all of these roads for me. You know why? Next time when they tell me that, choose a road, I say, how much is the budget? Because I now learnt that when people complain and say, stop fixing the road right at the PMP yard or the JLP yard, it is not quite so. That was the budget. When people say that the MP tiffed the money, it is because that was the budget. When people say to me, hey, MP Holness, why you never resurfaced the road? What kind of patching, patching business that? It is because the budget was 2 million for patching and not 200 million dollars for resurfacing. And so, I love the question. I believe that all of us as Members of Parliament need to find a medium. We all have to find a medium to say, these are the projects. If constituents want to be able to add a project, put it on this site, this is for your constituency. So we know that this particular road is important to this community, and they are rated. It also helps because in large constituencies like mine, I have had people saying to me like Woodford, my road bad, Harbour View, my road bad, and you're not fixing the road. But when they go now traversing the constituency, they're like, oh my God, all right, I understand. We have to go wait on content because their situation is far worse. It is so much worse than ours that we understand. And so, Members of Parliament need to spend the time to communicate, you need to engage the public, because the attitude that you can just go and do what you feel and you can choose what is important to you is the wrong way to function as a Member of Parliament.
Thank you so much, MP Holness. Do you have another question? Please go ahead, yes. We have a question online, we're gonna take it shortly, please.
Sure. Still on projects and even the fact that Minister Holness stated that Member of Parliament would just do what they want to do. You have, based on what I've heard so far, is that you are now going on the road, we're able to make, to determine what is that you are now going on the road, we're able to make, to determine what is best for each constituency. But what about the persons who will not be able to participate or they don't care to participate? Our perfect example where we are, we're here now and we wouldn't have the percentage of persons that we would want. How will you then determine that this is the project for this constituency when we only have five percent of the thirty that is within that constituency? How will you determine that you're, you're going to go ahead with that project?
MP Miller wanted chiming as well.
Difficult question, but guess what? That is what it is. There are Members of Parliament who will say to you, you voted, you didn't vote. Well, do not come down to my constituency office. You know, there are some MPs who do that? Yes, there are. It is important for Jamaicans to take themselves seriously. First, where you want to see your country go seriously. And then do exactly this. Hold your representatives accountable for taking you there. As a MP, when I was campaigning, I said to persons, I sat down and I looked at constituencies that were terribly underdeveloped. They voted one way for forty years. If your representative doesn't have to work for you to vote for them, why should they do any work? Isn't that so? So if you as a people decide that what I'm going to do, regardless of the party that my MP is from, if them don't work, they're gone, they are going to start working. Because they will realise they will not be in parliament if they do not function and work in the interests of the people in their constituency. And I have actually made it a mandate of mine to ensure that my constituents make up their mind that anybody who come after MP Juliet Holness must work. Because that is the only way you're gonna see significant development. Representation, when you said you saw representation, 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 representation. When I became a MP in 2016, I went down to NWA and I sat down with them. They said to me, Mrs. Holness, it's only two of you as MP come down here. Two. When I went to JSEF to represent on behalf of my constituents, they said, only you one. When I went down to SDC and said, I want to have a meeting with the entire SDC. I want to sit down now and look at my constituency and what you understood about the different areas and the projects, they said, well, wonderful, it would be good if more MPs would do that. It is going to be very critical that we learn what is required. If we don't know, if we don't participate, if we don't hold representatives accountable, they will not work because they will not need to work.
Thank you so much.
May I just come in here? One of the ways in which I gather information or, um, determine, you know, which projects I deem, well, are important to the constituency. There are many ways. Today we have social media. So people, if you track and monitor your social media, the modern MP, Mr. Miller, you will get the sentiments. You will hear what are the concerns of the people. You also have radio programs. So when you're driving your car heading to parliament, you're listening some radio talk show and you hear somebody call from your, from your office, from your constituency. You have your constituency office, they know it, they know the number. Sometimes they call and they tell the secretary or the assistant, this is the problem, this is this, so and so. So there are different ways of gathering and, you know, feeling the pulse of the constituency. But one of them is common sense. One of them I find is just mere common sense, just being on the ground. So for example, in terms of a, I'm walking a street and from time to time, there is a sewage spill. And so you, so you clear it, NWA, NWC comes and clear it, clears it. Two weeks' time, it's spilling again, overflowing. No, that is common sense. You don't need nobody to come and say, MP, that is one of the projects. Obviously now it needs some serious infrastructure intervention. You can't just come and clear it one day, clear it and two weeks' time it happens again. So that is a project now because it deals with the health of the constituents. It's very important. So you add that to your list and you say, this is a priority. So there are various ways. So, no, what I find, for example, in my constituency, something that I really don't like to see in this whole of a zinc fence, let's be frank. We don't like to zinc fences in our constituency. So for this year, I would say, boy, I'm targeting this six or seven. I'll try and remove this, these seven zinc fences this year. And I say, look here, I'm going to do a zinc fence removal project for various reasons. Now, based on your budget, it may very well be that you can only do four or three this year. So you tackle those three, you tackle those four. What you do is you give the people hope because they are recognizing that you have started to address this issue of zinc fence removal. You can't do all of them all the time and then you communicate that to the, to the constituency, to the constituents. And, um, Mrs. Holness mentioned it earlier. Some projects, given their cost, the cost of the project, it has to go through a process. Even though it might be a constituency local project, once it exceeds a certain amount, it goes through a process of procurement. And so these projects take time. So it boils down to this, communication with the constituents. Interacting, gathering your information and sometimes simple common sense.
Thank you so much, MP Miller. And at 229 persons now joining our PBCJ live feed, I can declare this is a hybrid town hall for sure. And in fact, our next question is coming from somebody online, Ricardo Webb. Thank you for your question. He asks, what will happen to MPs who don't go to committee meetings and not serving their constituency at the same time? He says, I think we should have yearly appraisal and link it with the system of recall. MP Holness.
The system of recall has been recommended many times for Members of Parliament. Um, I will definitely not take on any further discussing it because I do not believe I should preempt any policy that one would want to implement in that regard. So I won't preempt. However, there are mechanisms to determine how often Members of Parliament come to committee meetings. And it's not only about coming. I remember one time I was so annoyed because I said to one chairperson that you are only meeting to meet so that you can say that you- You kept twenty meetings. When I look at the quality of the meetings, I was wasting time. Not, not just the outcome, even the discourse. The important thing to do is to appreciate that Members of Parliament who are what we call backbenchers are the ones assigned to attend various committee meetings. There is a schedule of the meetings. Currently, what happens is only one meeting is held at a time, primarily because of the infrastructure and the technical requirement of the parliament. So handsad, only one set of recording, only one room for meeting. And you have heard the discourse to say, guess what? Let us try to find a way to have more than one committee meeting at the same time. But guess what? It will be the same bodies who are expected to be at the different meetings. So even then, we are gonna have a challenge. Persons who either travel on government business and every single time a trip is done, it is not just a member from the government who goes. So every delegation has a combination of government and opposition. Every time those persons go off and travel for whatever delegation they go on, you will have two, three, most times more than three members missing from the committee meetings at that time. I remember one particular committee that caused me great bother because I find it very important. And it came back to the question that Janet asked. The PAAC. I realised just sitting in the committee and functioning that persons actually didn't understand what the committee was about. We were always there and talking and talking and talking. And then it hit me that they didn't realise that when they approved the budget, that you have already approved what you are supposed to be sitting in the public accounts and appropriations committee to discuss. So what you found is persons coming to the committee now to have a discussion about what they approved to spend, asking why are we spending it when you approved it as legislation at the budget already? And it, it shocked me as a new parliament here and fairly new. So I remember my first four years as a MP, I used to sit in the meeting and shut up my mouth and just say, I'm here to learn. Serious business, I would sit there and I've seen new MPs do it. It is important that Members of Parliament attend the committee meetings. Not just because if you don't go, we can recall you. What it is, is a training ground for you to be able to function in the executive of the government, in managing various ministries, agencies and department. It is where you go to learn. The committee is your school as a MP. So for those who are listening, find out what community, committees your Member of Parliament is on. And start to ask them, are you going to committee meetings? Are you making sure that you go participate and you understand what is going on? Because a time is going to come that as many Jamaicans love it, they want their Member of Parliament to be a minister. Because when their Member of Parliament is a minister, they feel a sense that yes, we as constituents have also arrived. And to do that and to function effectively, you need to participate in that process. Not just attend and count numbers or not go at all, but to genuinely participate in your duty to hold government accountable, to do your assessment, depending on the type of committee you're on, and make a valuable contribution to the process.
Thank you, MP Holness. Please go ahead, give us your name. You didn't ask it earlier on.
Jeanette Calder, Executive Director for JAM. I just wanna thank Ricardo online for the question because though he might not have the terms of reference, under key deliverables and outputs, it says regular attendance and active participation at the sittings of parliament. And the second one says regular attendance at and active participation in committees of parliament where applicable. And one of the things I would like the committee to address is how do we define regular? And how do we define active? There are some parliaments around the world where their websites actually record. For instance, MP Miller's a backbencher. Backbenchers don't get a chance. That is something I want to see addressed. They don't get, they don't, we'll, we'll take it on. You can respond, Mrs. Holness, when you come to the mic. All right, so they sit on the committees and I agree, yeah? But I think when I watch the, the plenary sessions and I ask, for instance, the clerk of the house for the order paper. And when I see what we call private members' motion bills, yeah? Or maybe bills from the opposition, but we're sticking with the backbenchers. And we have backbenchers on both sides of the house. One of the complaints I make and one which both, um, clerks of the house have said to me is that, Jeanette, boy, you know how long this private members' motion is there? Them can't get a chance. So that's what I mean as a real example. Good, good quality proposals, Mrs. Holness.
No, I'm gonna answer you on that one. It has changed, it has changed. So the most recent booklet issued and one of the most recent standing orders committee held was to deal with exactly that change. Parliament is required to meet Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday at two o'clock. And the suggestion was made by Prime Minister and House leader to make a particular adjustment because it was realised that the list is so long in terms of the deliberations at parliament, backbenchers were not really getting a chance and even Members of the opposition to have private members' bills heard. And so this new standing order book, it appears it's now stated, five o'clock to seven o'clock on Thursday. Time was set there before for that element. It was always there, but guess what? People don't come to parliament very often on Thursdays unless there is budget presentation. So what happens? Parliament is always on a Tuesday. When it's budget time, you will find persons there on a Wednesday. When it is budget time, sometimes even on a Thursday. When you are doing sectorial, you will find them Monday, Tuesday, on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday to the wee hours of the morning. What has happened to Members of Parliament? And that is part of the reason why we're having this job description discussion is guess what? The responsibility in the constituency have grown so humongous that my constituents have zero appreciation that my job is Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, parliament. They couldn't care less if I go there one day. What they would love is if I had more of the Thursdays when I come to the constituency. And they wouldn't mind if constituency day was Monday to Friday. If I could do Saturday and Sunday, they would. So that is what has happened to a lot of parliamentarians. On a Thursday, they have designated that very often for their constituency day. Those who have a constituency office, very often Thursday is their constituency day. But we have picked up the deficiency in that persons are not getting to be able to do that. And so the latest suggestion made was one that when the sectoral presentations are completed, which deals with the budget key, instead of moving into constituency debates, and I never quite agree with it, we are going to allow a period now to deal with private members' motion as a priority so that we get those coming through. So that change has been made very recently by the parliament. And persons who are on the government side especially have been encouraged, do not sit there and leave only the opposition to go through the process of coming with a private members' bill. You are supposed to look around and see what suggestions do you have for improving the lives of Jamaicans and what legislations and improvements you think are necessary and take them to the parliament via private members' motions.
That's very good, that's very good.
Thank you, Janet. Do you have another question?
But I didn't get to the question, actually.
Oh, so sorry, go ahead, please.
I'm reclaiming my time.
So sorry, go ahead.
So, um, Mrs. Holness, just to take the point Mrs. Holness has made, what I'm really focusing on is how do we translate that moderator bisoun into the terms of reference? So it's good that it's in the standing orders, but the definition here of active and regular? Yes, go ahead.
So it's not, it's not quite here yet in the standing orders. It is what came to our, either the second to last or last standing orders meeting. So it's currently being deliberated. I was one of the persons who quite objected vociferously because I thought my job as a Member of Parliament is to come and speak to my constituents and represent them in respect of the constituency debate. And I was not amused at all that private bills would be taking precedence over my constituency debate. Um, being one of those MPs who was insistent, I am no rubber stamp. I said, nobody explain this thing to me. Why are we doing this change? Constituency debate should come first. And so the discourse continued and I relented in the end when I realised that guess what? It is in order to ensure not-
All representative.
Right, that all persons are able to come and represent in respect. So you're gonna see that being added to the standing order very quickly because we continue to do those updates where we do believe, and that was one particular area. I know Prime Minister Holness made that recommendation that we do that change and House leader has been pushing it because it is critical. The opposition have been calling for it and it is valuable for us as well as backbenchers on the government side to participate in more private members' motion.
Okay, thanks, Mrs. Holness. Thank you. Thank you, MP Holness, yes, please.
I spoke earlier about the two issues, it was consultation and oversight. I'm gonna limit my response to what Miss Holness said in the interest of time to the consultation. So we touched on the issues of the CDF in our commentary and that takes up quite a bit of the terms of reference. So I just wanna ground it in some reality here, moderator bisoun.
Please go ahead.
The matter of consultation, are we talking about CDF? I'm really very grateful for what MP Miller says because just as a practical example, people think maybe I just come on here and talk for fifteen minutes. That's not the job. JAM has provided six digital tools for citizens to use, who are really the employers and the financiers, yeah? To hold government to account and to monitor government. Now, one of those is called an MP tracker. Each MP has a profile page where we tell you a little bit about them. And one of the reasons that citizens discover what I do is because they're looking for their MP. What do they do? They back out their phone, Miss Bisoun, and they put in the MP name and our website comes up. Now, it took me over one year to collect the addresses and the contact information for our Members of Parliament as an established organisation. So to- So to what degree is the government or the parliament interested in consultation? Because as far as I know, the JAM website is the only place where citizens can go and find sixty-three MPs, their address of their offices, their social media for the modern ones, email address and a email address and the physical location of the office. So you ask the question, to what extent is consultation welcomed? If I don't even know where to find my member of parliament? Moderator bisoon, every month taxpayers contribute, I'm told, two hundred and fifty thousand, that's a quarter million dollars to each constituency office. For the same point MP Miller made, utility, secretary, rent. Now, if we are paying the rent, I applaud him for saying, we're not supposed to have green or orange, it belongs to the people of Jamaica. My second and last point about consultation, grounding it in reality. JAM is also trying to collect all the constituency development reports to place on that same page for each MP. Why? We're not interested in assessing the MPs, you know, but we want the citizens to be able to find it. Now, just as an example, Mrs. Holness, talk about the shock about going to meetings and here nobody never go before. Mrs. Holness, when I wanted a CDF report, I went to the CDF unit. Do you know how long it took me to get an answer? And I said, why is this taking so long? Senator Gale, you know what the answer was, Miss Calder, nobody never asked for this yet before, you know? That is the answer, God. This was in two thousand and eighteen. Now, the only MP in this room who has provided JAM with a report is MP Robert Miller. So again, it goes back to the question is how can we translate these into the terms of reference? So that I'm not begging Miss Bisoon, but we can get the information that we want.
So Janet, sometimes unfortunately honest politicians are not appreciated. I never trust you at all. So I decided I wasn't submitting my information and that is the fact, sometimes honestly not good. So I am, right, it is, it is the case. So I love to have an appreciation for the organization and what I'm doing and what I'm providing. So my office, I am so happy for you because my office gets calls from Hanover, West Milan, everywhere. When they look for an MP, somehow I don't know why they find my office. And they call my constituency office for all across Jamaica. And I would love to now direct them. You have started before the parliament, but the parliament is there now. Members of parliament did not even want to provide their information.
That's correct.
Yes, and as of now, every single member of parliament is now registered for the parliament, their email address, constituency office, location of the office. So let me give credit, it may well be that because you started the trust, then the parliament caught on, but we are there. And I do not think my comment in being honest is one that should be taken lightly. Because other MPs, if they're not as trusting, will say, I wonder what is this thing and what are they doing and is this information accurate, are they credible? So I am happy that you came forward and provided that insight. There is one member of parliament that I noticed persons tracked, I won't call his name. And they kept calling the report that he does a constituency development report, it was not. He was reporting the projects in his constituency. So I do a report for my constituency. I do not submit it as CDF because it is like all the projects, including what is done with the CDF. However, for the public to understand, even if you don't do a nice picture book, the constituency development fund and the office functions in this way. You get a schedule of the amount that you have put forward for the projects for your constituency. So if you have budgeted five million dollars for education, which is a minimum allowed, or ten million dollars for education, that comes on the report from the CDF office for each member of parliament. It is usually administered by the person who is the administrative assistant for the CDF. And that person is employed to work with your constituency office. So you have two CDF officers in a way, one that resides at the CDF office at the OPM. That person usually has charge over sometimes as much as ten constituencies that they oversee and monitor and make sure you are spending according to the budget, that the projects meet the requirement of the constituency development fund in terms of the rules and the regulations and the process. And then each constituency has the ability to say, I would like to have an admin assistant. I think maybe my constituency is one of the few that doesn't have one because it is one point five million dollars out of the constituency development fund of twenty million. And since my constituents need it, I've decided that we have to do the work. So that that one point five million can go to education, it can go to mitigation, it can go somewhere else. So everybody has that report. What I believe is a challenge you are having is that there is no structure that makes that report public. And that is really what the challenge is. So it is not that it doesn't exist.
Correct, I agree with that.
As the chair for CDF, I remember there was a time when it was argued, oh, you have some MPs who not spending a CDF. And the media wanted to talk to me. Luckily, I was not hearing the call immediately. I'm happy that I missed that bullet. I have no clue how much money each MP spends. It is confidential information, not even the chair gets the information. So when nationwide news wanted to know, how can you tell me now, Mrs. Holness, this person, why do they have ten million, why that one have seven million? I had no clue. What I do as chair is just continue to say to persons, look, if you don't spend the Christmas mitigation by Christmas and you come to me in January and ask that your project be approved, the answer will be no. And your constituents will be cutting off your neck because you missed the Christmas spend. And you cannot spend Christmas in January or February or March. So you are now at the end of a budget here and you're gonna lose that three point five million allocation. So I am gonna go back and sit with the CDF office. And it may not be our first CDF meeting, but I will also champion the cause internally. So that at a minimum, you see that allocation sheet. It shows all the areas that are sponsored by the CDF. It doesn't really show the minimum and upper limit. Different constituencies decide what they need. So one constituency may say, look here, what is important to us is roads. Because we have everything else. We don't need anybody giving us anything for back to school and, and that. So this is how we're gonna spend, ten million for infrastructure, five million for education and probably five million for housing if they could. Some constituencies. Another one will have three million dollars, which is the maximum for welfare, three million dollars, which is the maximum for social housing, which is little ply, little zinc, little cement, that is what it is. And so each constituency now would be
Three genius debt consolidation tactics you need to know. Debt is like jumping into the ocean when you don't know how to swim.
Of cement, that is what it is. And so each constituency now would be